Question to the five regulations which are displayed on the screens. Yes, they are. Also, can you please ensure your phones are switched off or to silent and councillors, can I ask you to speak into the microphone as we are being webcast? Members of the public, I'd like to say that as a committee, we understand that matters under consideration tonight can be quite emotive. While it's a meeting held in public, it is not a public meeting, therefore I'd ask you, please be respectful of those around you in the public gallery and the committee and refrain from any booing, cheering or any other form of disturbance. So now let's move on to business. The minutes of the meeting that took place on the 8th of July have been laid on the table for the last thirty minutes. Are you content that I sign these as a correct record of that meeting? Thank you. Item two, have there been any apologies for absence? Emma?
We have apologies from councillors Pat Frost, Jill Hargreaves and Martin Lear. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item three, have any members declared any interest before the meeting?
I haven't, yeah, I haven't received any from before the meeting, but I understand those who are Farnham Town councillors would want a non-perpetual interest.
Thank you very much. Item four, question from members of the public, have there been any, Emma?
None received.
Thank you. And any updates to government guidance or legislation the committee should be aware of? Elizabeth?
Thank you, Chairman. There have been some relevant changes since your last meeting, to update you on, members. Firstly, at the beginning of July, the government published its document fixing the foundations, creating a more prosperous nation as part of its growth agenda. I'm sure many members have seen that document. This does include some future proposed changes to the development control process, including the granting of automatic permission on brownfield land and also a proposal to transfer infrastructure applications with an element of housing to the nationally significant infrastructure regime. Now, these particular proposals are going to be subject to further guidance from government, so they're not actually in force yet, but this is just forewarning of them probably coming forward. In addition, with immediate effect, the government's threshold for measuring planning application performance has changed and raised to require that no fewer than fifty percent, raised from forty percent, of major applications should be determined outside of the statutory determination period. Now, this performance target is the one that informs the poorly performing designation and the special measures regime. Actually, this council's doing very well at the moment and we're hitting about ninety percent, but it's something for all committee members to be mindful of, particularly when dealing with major applications. There is a proposal as well to bring minor developments into the performance regime, and that is developments of one to nine dwellings and up to a thousand square metres of commercial floor space, but that hasn't actually been introduced yet, it's just the change to the measurement of major applications. Moving on, a second important change to update you on has followed a High Court judgment received last week. This was a judicial review by two local councils of the government's decision to change the policy and guidance on affordable housing and infrastructure last autumn. This change effectively raised the threshold to more than ten dwellings before affordable housing or infrastructure contributions could be sought, but the court decided that the government's actions were not lawful due to flawed procedure and inadequate consultation. So the government guidance in the NPPG has been withdrawn. So in respect of affordable housing, this means that this council can now revert to applying its policy H5 in the local plan, which includes being able to ask for onsite affordable housing on rural settlement sites or five net new dwellings or over point two of a hectare. Those changes last November had effectively meant we had to set that policy aside, so we're back to being able to apply it. But please be aware, the government has indicated it's going to probably go to the Court of Appeal and challenge the decision to challenge it in the High Court, so I don't think the discussion's finished yet, the conversation's over, but watch this space. In relation to infrastructure, the NPPG changes to the pooling arrangements that took effect in April of this year will continue to apply, so that in fact it's not practical to revert back to the supplementary planning document PIC calculator on one to ten dwellings as we previously had before November. This is because, as members be aware, all contributions since April now have to be justified on a bespoke and case-specific basis, and we can't just take a figure, apply it to the calculator and expect a developer to pay it without there being actual dedicated projects that the money's going to go to. And there's, of course, this obligation that no more than five planning obligations are used to fund one piece of infrastructure, so that's still in force. So given this, the infrastructure providers are only likely to seek contributions on major developments in order to maximise the contributions. There are no applications on tonight's agenda that require reassessment in the light of the change to affordable housing policy position, but in relation to PIC, there are three proposals that are potentially affected, and they are A1, B2 and B4, but officers consider that, bearing in mind what I've just explained, that the approach that we've taken in the report remains valid. So I hope that's helpful to members. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you very much for that. Elizabeth? Moving on to item six, the quarterly report. Louise, would you like to present that report to the committee, please?
Thank you, Chairman. Members will note from the agenda that four appeal decisions have been received in the last quarter. The first is at land at Runfold St George in Badshot Lee, which was an outline application for seven dwellings. This proposal was refused because of the effect of the proposal on the character and appearance of the area and the unsustainable location for new housing. The inspector dismissed the appeal for the same reasons that the council refused it. Two appeal decisions were received at seventy-three Heath Lane in Farnham. The first was for the erection of one dwelling. This was dismissed at appeal because of the unacceptable impact on the character and appearance of the area and the failure to provide off-street car parking. This was in line with the refusal reasons by the council. The second decision on the site was for the erection of the dwelling and extensions and alterations to the existing dwelling. This appeal was allowed, and the inspector considered that this scheme would have an acceptable appearance. The final appeal decision was at Kiln Cottage on Badshot Farm Lane, and this was for the erection of a first-floor extension. This application was refused because of the effect of the proposed development on the character and appearance of the countryside and the impact on adjoining neighbours. Again, this was dismissed at appeal for the same reasons that the application was refused. I'm happy to answer any questions on these appeals.
Thank you very much, Louise. Are you happy, members, to note that report? Thank you. Item seven on the agenda is the quarterly enforcement report. Victoria would like to present this to the committee, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Committee, if I could take you to page twelve, which is the site updates for your area, we have three. Land north of River Lane, we have, there's an enforcement notice on this land for the stationing of caravans for residential use. There is still a caravan, well, there is a residential caravan on the land. There is a application, planning application, that has been submitted and we have been advised to not take any enforcement action whilst the planning application is being determined, so the matter will be reviewed enforcement-wise once the outcome of the planning application is known. The second update is Puddlewood. The breach was unauthorized change of use from woodland to various mixed uses and operational development, and we served an enforcement notice. You will note that the report says the enforcement notice not complied with, but I can give you a verbal update to say that that enforcement notice has now been complied with. And thirdly, we have Eleven Knights Road, enforcement notice erection of a building which has not been removed as required currently, so a prosecution service is with the legal services. If I could take you to the statistics on page fourteen to give you the headlines. Caseload currently for the, caseload rather for the last quarter, April to June, is two hundred and thirty-eight, the target being two hundred and fifty, so it's under the target, and we've had a reduction from the previous quarter. The, our performance against the local performance indicator was ninety-five percent. The target for that is seventy percent. And again, it's ninety-five percent, which is up from the last quarter. Thank you very much, Chairman, and I'd be happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Councillor Storey?
Thank you. I'm looking at the land north of River Lane. I'm just considering that this can go on forever. We have an enforcement notice, they put in a planning application, we can probably turn it down, I don't know, I haven't seen it yet, so I don't want to prejudge it, but supposing we did turn it down, then the appeal, if they lose the appeal, then we can go back to the enforcement notice and they'll put in another planning application. Is there no way round this situation?
Thank you, Chairman. We can refuse to accept repeat applications and we will, obviously it is reviewed each time the decision of the planning application is made, and we do understand the, we do understand the concern with regards to enforcement, but the advice that we have, the advice that we have received that we, that it is best that we don't take enforcement action whilst this planning application is being determined. Thank you.
Erica?
Thank you, Chairman. If I could just add to that, I'm not quite familiar with this file because it's not one of mine, but I would presume that the legal advice was given probably because of the circumstances of the case, so once the planning application has been determined, if it's been refused, then we can always proceed with prosecution at that stage if that's the appropriate action to take, because with the circumstances, it's fairly difficult to understand, because the owner of the site is deceased and there's a new owner who's just taken over, and that new owner's trying to work with the council to comply. So I think that might have been the reason why the advice from legal would be to wait for the planning application to be determined, so it's not seen to be unreasonable.
Thank you, Erica. I'd just like to congratulate the enforcement team, as the previous committee did, on this very good set of figures and reports, so thank you very much for all your hard work, Victoria. Members, are you content to note this report? Thank you. Applications for planning permission. Oh, sorry, most importantly, went straight past it. I knew my vice-chairman would sort me out on this one. Item number eight, Thames Basin Heath Special Protection Area. Table printed in the agenda update sheet's been updated with the latest SANG figure. Elizabeth, would you like to add anything to this?
There's nothing to add to the report, Chairman, clearly members will be aware from the new table and the update sheet, there's a hundred and eighty-two dwellings of unallocated capacity, that's the current total, and the report is for members to note. Thank you very much.
No further comment then. Members, are you content to note the update? Thank you very much indeed. Now we can move on to the applications for planning permission. In the event of site visit inspections being necessary as a result of consideration of the applications at this meeting, these will be held on Tuesday, the first of September, until time to be agreed. So moving on to the planning applications. First application, A1 WA2015 oblique zero seven zero zero, land at Lobster Pot, forty Upper Hale Road, Farnham, GU90NS. Rachel, would you like to introduce the application?
Thank you, Chair. I'll first of all take you through, this is an outline application, and the matters for consideration are the means of access, the layout and the scale. Reserved matters for this application are appearance and landscaping. The application site is located on the north-east side of Upper Hale Road and forms part of the car park for the Lobster Pot restaurant. You'll see from the aerial view that it's surrounded by residential dwellings. This is the Lobster Pot on screen just here, and the application site is this area below. Before I take you through the proposal, you may have noted from the update sheet that since the preparation of the agenda, an appeal decision has been received in relation to an earlier application on this site. That application was for four dwellings and that appeal was allowed. That decision is highly material in the assessment of this current application and does weigh heavily in favour of the current proposal. The current proposal, you'll see set out on screen, the proposed site layout is for three detached dwellings with attached garages and a total of eight car parking spaces. Each dwelling has its own private garden and shed. This is an indicative street scene. The final appearance will be the subject of a reserved matters application. On screen is a comparison between the current proposal and the appeal scheme. You'll see the three dwellings on screen is the current proposal before you, and this is a layout for four dwellings allowed at appeal. Again, there's a comparison between the current proposal and the appeal scheme. Both are indicative elevations, but you'll see there is an increased distance between the neighbouring property, the Farvings, that's this dwelling here, and the nearest dwelling. You'll see the garages are now situated directly adjacent to the boundary, which gives that greater separation distance at first-floor level. And you'll also note that there is greater spacing between the dwellings by virtue of the reduction in number. From site photographs now, this is looking towards the back of the site, that's an existing hedge which provides some screening to the properties behind on Willow Way, and you'll see the Lobster Pot on the left. On the bottom again, this is looking towards Lobster Pot, Upper Hale Road on your left. And this is looking towards the nearest neighbouring property. Here, you've got some photographs of the street scene looking along Upper Hale Road. I'll take you through the determining issues in relation to this application. The matters of principle and technical judgment are the principle of development, the planning history and differences of the previous proposal, the lawful use of the site and impact on the existing restaurant, highway safety and parking, the housing land supply. For matters of judgment, the impact on visual amenity, impact on residential amenity and amenity space. I shall explain some of the implications of the allowed appeal in relation to these. The principle of redeveloping the site for residential use has been established by the appeal decision. The inspector considered that severing the existing Lobster Pot site would not adversely impact on the viability of the existing restaurant. In respect of visual amenity, the inspector considered the appeal scheme to be acceptable, and members will note the reduction in the number of units and increased spacing in the current proposal. In respect of residential amenity, the inspector considered that the proposal would not appear overbearing or intrusive from the Farvings, which is the most immediate neighbour, and the inspector noted the existing laurel hedge that runs along the rear boundary, that's where properties on Willow Way would provide a significant amount of screening. And well as to be removed in the future, overlooking would only affect a small portion of the garden to number eight. Given the inspector's conclusions, it would be difficult to justify refusal on the basis of harm to residential amenities. In respect of highway safety and parking, the inspector considered the proposed level of parking in the appeal scheme to be acceptable. In the appeal scheme, there was an under-provision of parking against the council's standards, however, the current proposal does meet the standards in full. I'll take you to the update sheet, you will note an additional consultation response from the environmental health, raising no objection. And in addition, you'll note an additional plan which sets out the parking to remain for the Lobster Pot. Further letters of representation and two additional conditions. The revised recommendation is there for that, subject to conditions one to three and five to eighteen, on pages thirty-nine to forty-four of the agenda, conditions nineteen and twenty of this update sheet, and informatives one to thirteen on pages forty-four to forty-six of the agenda, that outline permission be granted. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Rachel. This item is the subject of public speaking, I understand the procedure has been explained to you. There is no object registered to speak, so please, can I call on Sarah Melton to speak in support of the application?
Good evening, everyone. My name's Sarah Melton, I'm here to represent the applicant. My colleague Nick Turner is also here to answer any questions relating to the design. The application is located on a brownfield site within the settlement boundary of Farnham. The site is currently a car park which serves the Lobster Pot restaurant. The character of the surrounding area is residential and generally of a traditional style. There are a wide range of amenities near the site, and the site is well served by public transport, making the location of the proposed scheme extremely sustainable. A previous application of the development for four four-bedroom semi-detached houses was subject to an appeal, the appeal was very recently allowed by the planning inspector. The application is for three four-bedroom detached houses with associated parking. The scheme before you is the outcome of the applicant working closely with the LPA to reach an acceptable solution. An example of this is the parking arrangement. The original submission included garages and extensive hard landscaping. The LPA was concerned that the garages was unlikely to be used for car parking, and there was insufficient space provided for soft landscaping. The solution was to condition the use of the garages solely for the use of car parking. We are aware that members of the public have expressed concern in regards to the car parking for the proposal scheme. The scheme will provide eight car parking spaces for the three dwellings, which is in accordance with local planning policy. This exceeds the average number of cars per dwelling in the area, which is one point six. This figure is from the Office of National Statistics. The height of the development is in keeping with the surrounding area, the roof form and the height of the proposed scheme are two more aspects of the development which the applicant has liaised closely with the LPA. The height of the development in the amended plans has been reduced from the original submission, the height is now deemed acceptable by the LPA. Members of the public have also expressed concerns about the loss of privacy. Should this application be approved, a reserved matters application will include careful consideration in the internal layout and where necessary, the use of obscure glazing. Combining these measures with the retention of the existing planting along the boundaries and the distance between the dwellings, overlooking will be kept to a minimum. The proposed scheme will not dominate the street scene, as the density and the layout of the dwellings are informed by the current residential built form. Appearance isn't a matter to be determined by this application, but if this scheme were to be approved, the subsequent reserved matters application would be for a traditional design to reflect the local vernacular. Overall, the development will provide much needed sustainable homes and make a positive contribution to the street scene. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. Members, it's open to you. Councillor Hodge?
Thank you, Chairman. I don't think the current proposal fully addresses earlier concerns about the overbearing nature of this development, but given the outcome of the appeal, I'd much rather see three houses there than four, I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Potts?
Thank you, Chairman. Well, following on really from councillor Hodge's comments, I feel really we've not got very, we've really got nowhere to go with this. I would rather, far rather see three houses there than four, however, I would rather have not seen three houses there. I think three is too many. I still feel myself, looking at the plans, that it is too dense and it is still quite overbearing. I still have a concern about, I know the applicant, when she spoke, said that the roof heights and the pitch has been reduced. I still think it's too high, it's higher than, it's still quite substantially higher than, I think, Farvings, which is the property next to it. I think it's still about, is it a metre higher, something, perhaps if that could just be clarified? But overall, yeah, that's still my main concern, but it's a balance and I can't really see how legitimately we can now turn this down, because what we could end up with is just four houses being built. So I just, as I say, I don't think we've really got a choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Potts. Councillor Fraser?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Notwithstanding whether it's three or four houses, my concern is on the car parking. If this is a large restaurant, the Lobster Pot, and when full, I fear that the twenty-five car parking spaces remaining around it will not be sufficient. That being so, there is nowhere else for these cars to go but on the curbside on the Upper Hale Road, which would be extremely dangerous. Having ruled out the Upper Hale Road, the only other places they could go would be into the back streets of Willow's Estate or the Oath House Estate, or even unthinkably up Bethel Lane and Heath Lane, even narrower. All of these are very congested at the moment, because many of the residents there lack off-street parking. I fear that the loss of the car park means there's going to be a car parking problem, and I would oppose the scheme on that basis.
Thank you very much. I'll let Elizabeth answer this one first.
Just to say, Chairman, thank you for letting me come in. Do fully appreciate the concerns that you've raised, but would just take you back to the point Rachel made at the beginning, that the inspector did consider the principle of the loss of the car park and the impact it would have, and that's a highly material consideration to this decision, as it was obviously pertinent to his own decision, so it would be probably unreasonable to try and revisit that point now. You really must take into account the conclusions that he reached about parking implications and the fact that the loss of the car park was acceptable in itself, in terms of the pub relationship and the parking implication, and also that the current situation in relation to parking for this scheme is better than the appeal scheme. So overall in parking, whilst I do recognise your concern, this is actually overall better than the appeal situation. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Elizabeth. I was going to make the same sort of comment, that the inspector's already said that the scheme for four houses with less parking that we require is acceptable, therefore the situation with the Lobster Pot and surrounding area, which I fully understand is, the scheme is going to be better for the local. Councillor Fraser, come back.
Sorry about coming back, Mr Chairman, but I read this very carefully and I was under the impression that the consideration of the parking adequacy was to do with the houses and the parking associated with the houses. It didn't, to my memory, concern itself overly with the parking remaining, the residual parking remaining relevant to the Lobster Pot. If the Lobster Pot... If the Lobster Pot, a considerable size of restaurant, is to be filled, and I think it would have to be to be viable, then there will be more cars than 25, because people might walk to a pub, but they drive to a restaurant.
I'd just say that it's not relevant to this planning application that we're considering. I take your point that it's not relevant. We are looking at the three houses on this planning application. Sorry, councillor Coburn.
I was going to speak, and then councillor Fraser indicated, I too want to have a rant about parking, but not about that. Going back to the appeal decision, I'm very, very disappointed with the appeal decision on the parking aspect, because, you know, we have got the parking guidelines there, and I don't think Surrey support us at all on that, well, didn't in that appeal. And I have reservations about all parking that isn't secure, that, or doesn't make it essential, that there is turning circles within the curtilage, because the roads we all know in Farnham, you know, we do have a problem if cars are reversing out onto them. So mine is a broader point. I have no problem with this application. I don't think we have a, you know, I think we have to go along with it, and it's certainly better to the previous one. But I do think that we should query with Surrey sometimes, a little more than we do their attitude to both our parking numbers, if they disagree with us, and also the, when we talk about the safety of sort of the access and egress in forward gear, I'm not sure always that Surrey comes out often enough and sees the dangerous aspect to some of the parking that we're dealing with. But having said that, this is much better than the parking was on the fore, and therefore I think we just have to go along with it.
Members, thanks for that. Do the officers wish to make any further comment?
I think, nothing further to add. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Yeah, yes.
Okay, Chairman, yes, just to say that we do recognise as officers that from time to time you do have concerns about highways issues, well, probably quite often, and it is a technical matter, and we constantly advise you that it's a difficult area to challenge when we're getting technical advice from the Highway Authority, but you as local members clearly have good experience of the conditions on the ground. And on that basis, Matthew Evans, head of planning, has arranged with the County Highway Authority engineers to come and meet with members sometime in September or October to create a workshop situation whereby you can pose questions to the engineers and ask them to explain some of these situations. I do think you'll find that helpful, and that will be arranged in due course. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth. Look forward to that. We'll move on then to the recommendation. The revised recommendation is that, subject to the conditions one to three and five to eighteen on pages thirty-nine and forty-four of the agenda, and condition nineteen and twenty on the update sheet, and informatives one to thirteen on pages forty-four to forty-six of the agenda, outline planning permission be granted. Those in favour, would they please show?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
Those against?
One.
Thank you. Abstentions? I think that's everyone, isn't it? So that is granted. Thank you very much. Move on to item B1, WA20150953. It's a non-speaking item. Change of use of unit 4A, Romans Industrial Park, East Street, Farnham, GU97SY. Louise, would you like to introduce the application to the committee?
Thank you, Chairman. This site is located on the southern side of East Street, within an industrial, within an area of industrial buildings. The site is currently unoccupied, but was previously within a B1C light industrial use. The site to the north, just here, has recently been allowed at appeal for the conversion from an industrial unit to a gym. This photo shows the entrance to the site, with the fire station to the left here, and a children's toy shop to the right. This photo shows the front of the industrial unit, the car parking to the front, and other industrial units located to the side. The proposal would change the use of the building from a light industrial purpose to a post-19 training centre for approximately 40 young adults. Internally, the building would be converted to provide training spaces, offices and meeting rooms. There would be approximately 15 full-time staff and five full-time, I'm sorry, five part-time staff, and an average of 25 young adults would visit the site per day. Marketing, well, the site has been marketed for other industrial units since August 2014. The applicants were the only interested party in the unit. Parking would be provided immediately in front of the proposed unit, with space for 10 cars. Matters of principle and technical judgment are the principle of the development, the highways access and parking, and biodiversity. The matters of judgment are the loss of the suitably located industrial land, the location of development, the provision of community facilities, and the compatibility of uses. Can I also draw members' attention to the update sheet, which is the green update? Since the publication of the agenda report and the main update, we have received comments from the Estates and Valuations Manager. They have commented that the site has been marketed at a correct price and in an appropriate fashion, however, they have commented that the marketing period was short, as it was less than a year. In relation to this, officers consider that whilst there is some tension between Policy IT 2 and the proposal, in regards to the fact that the site hasn't been marketed for a year, the proposal would still be employment generating use, employing 20 staff on the site. And having regard to this, officers would raise no objections on this ground. I'm happy to answer any questions that members have.
Thank you, Louise. Members, it's all yours. councillor MacLeod.
Could I ask a question, how long the building has been unoccupied or unused?
I'm not sure how long it's been unoccupied, but it was marketed from last August for nine months until the applicants for this application raised an interest in the site.
Thank you for that. If I can just comment quickly on this one, because it's in the ward which I represent together with councillor Hill. I thought that the officer's report is a very good report. I think it's a very good reuse of the building. I see no reason to object to it, and I would support the officer's recommendation. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much for that. Members, let's move then straight to the recommendation. If you have no further questions, the recommendation is mission be granted, subject to conditions one to four, and informative one on pages sixty-two and sixty-three of the agenda. Can I have a show of hands, those in favour, please?
Okay, that's unanimous.
Unanimous, thank you, that's granted. Item B2, WA20150955, erection of a dwelling at land at Cherryfields, Fullers Road, Rowledge. Karen, would you like to take this one, please?
Thank you, Chairman. The site is located on the northern side of Fullers Road, near to the junction with Rosemary Lane. The site is a grassed area which extends from Fullers Road frontage to the north, and is accessed via an existing access track to the west of the site. The land appears to be in use as fields or paddock and is not garden land. It has an open character with no built development. There is a belt of hedgerow and mature trees to the Fullers Road frontage. And to the east of the site are protected by, trees protected by tree preservation orders. To the north is a belt of conifers which form a high hedge. Residential properties surround the site to the east, the west, sorry, the east, the west, and the south. Photographs, the first one we have is the access road to the site which exists to Cherryfields. Access will be taken from this road. Second photograph here is a view into the site from Fullers Road, and this is a view along the frontage of the site with the screen boundary. This is an example of other residential properties in the area opposite the site and adjacent to the site to the west. The site lies within part of the developed area of Farnham, and part within the countryside beyond the green belt, and an area of strategic visual importance. This slide is taken from the local plan and shows how the developed boundary area cuts across the site, which you can see here. The proposal is for the construction of a single detached dwelling house and a detached double garage, both of which will be located within the developed area. As you can see, this is the line, developed area this side, countryside beyond the green belt to the north. The curtilage of the, sorry, the curtilage associated with the dwelling would extend into the countryside beyond the green belt and into the area of strategic visual importance. The site is not considered to constitute previous developed land, however, there was a dismissed appeal on the site in 2013, in which the inspector took the view that there may be some scope to utilise part of the area outside of the settlement boundary. This is the appeal which was dismissed. The slide shows the layout and design of the dismissed scheme, as shown by the blue line, the dismissed dwellings extended the full width of the plot and beyond the developed area boundary into the countryside beyond the green belt and the ASVI. It is noted that a similar application to the refused scheme, sorry, to the dismissed scheme for two dwellings was refused under delegated powers in July 2015. The proposed dwelling house would be detached, two-storey, with no accommodation in the roof space, and would be a traditional arts and crafts style. The property would have four bedrooms with a detached double garage located to the front. The main differences between the dismissed appeal scheme and the proposed scheme are: the number of units has been reduced from two to one; the dwelling has been redesigned, and as a result, the roof ridge has been reduced by approximately one metre, and the dwelling width reduced by approximately four metres; and the proposed dwelling would be positioned to the east of the site, and as such, no built form extends beyond the developed boundary. The matters for technical judgment for this application are: the principle of development, planning history and differences with the previous proposal, both are refused in the dismissed appeal; housing land supply, trees, highways access and car parking, effect on SPAs, biodiversity; and the matters for judgment are: design and impact on visual amenity, impact on residential amenity, countryside beyond the green belt and ASVI, and amenity space. Thank you, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Karen. Members, it's all yours. Yes, there are no questions then. Let's move straight to the recommendation. The revised recommendation is subject conditions one to fourteen, and informative one to five are set out on pages eighty-six, ninety-two of the agenda, and the additional condition fifteen, and the additional informative six in the update sheet, permission be granted. May have those in favour, please show.
That's unanimous?
Unanimous, thank you very much. Thank you, members. Moving on to item B3, WA20150641, erection of a care home at Bretham's Meeting Room, West Street, Farnham, GU97AP. Rachel, would you like to introduce this application?
Thank you, Chair. The application site is located to the south-east of West Street. It's bordered by allotments to the south, Cemetery Lodge, which is a residential dwelling to the north-east, and residential dwellings to the south-west. An aerial view of the site, you will note the existing building in the centre, and it is surrounded currently by car parking. And the site, existing site photographs on screen, you will see the site is dominated at present by car parking. This is a view looking towards the entrance, and a more close-up view of the existing entrance into the site, and on the top left, the existing building. These are the views from the front of the site, you'll see the site entrance, looking from West Street, and this is closer up to the front boundary, looking at the application or the existing building on site. The application proposes the erection of a care home, following the demolition of the existing building on site, which will contain 64 beds. You'll see it's centred around courtyard areas, with parking provided to the front of the site, and a bins store located behind the front boundary wall, just here. I've also labelled on screen some of the distances to the nearest residential dwellings. You'll see to Cemetery Lodge, a distance of 13 metres, that's taken from the corners, and similarly 16 metres between King's Meir and that elevation. You'll see the existing and proposed street scenes. The building is well set down in the site, which has resulted in it integrating and being of a similar height to the buildings either side of it. There are elevations of the existing building. These are the proposed elevations, front and rear, of the proposed building. You'll see its maximum height of 9.4 metres, labelled on screen. The 64 bedrooms would be split over two floors. The floor plans you'll see, first of all, the ground floor plan, and the first floor plan as proposed. Some further images of the proposed front elevation. This captures the entrance into the site. You'll see a new pedestrian access is proposed into the site, and changes to the front boundary wall, which would open up views into the site. You've got an illustration here, which is, gives you an idea of how it would look within the street scene, taken from further back. That's the entrance you see coming in just here. And the proposed building illustrated behind the trees. I'll take you now through the determining issues on screen. The matters of technical judgment of principle are: the principle of development, the loss of the existing use, the need for a proposed use, parking in highways, and effect on the SPAs. Matters of judgment in this case are: the impact on the countryside beyond the green belt, design of visual amenity, and impact on residential amenity. The site does lie in the countryside beyond the green belt, but is previously developed land. Justification has been provided for the loss of the existing meeting hall. The principal of development is, in officers' view, therefore considered to be acceptable. The proposed development would contribute to a need for increased accommodation for the elderly. In respect of parking, 26 spaces are provided. The council's guidelines for this type of development require individual justification to be put forward for the numbers, and in this case, reference has been made to local census data, average trip movements on similar schemes, access to public transport, and its proximity to the town centre. And members are asked to exercise their judgment in respect of the visual impact of the scheme and its impact on residential amenities. If I could now draw your attention to the update sheet. Following legal advice, officers recommend that natural England requirements be captured within a legal agreement, such to avoid a significant effect on the SPA. There is also a further update on the site. It's come to light recently, that state- It's come to light recently that stagecoach who operate one of the bus routes along West Street are likely to be withdrawing that bus service along the road. However, the county highway authority have looked again at their justification for those parking figures and advised that it wouldn't change their view on the acceptability of that level of parking. And officers do consider that the site is sustainably located and that the number of spaces would be sufficient nonetheless. The revised recommendation therefore, there's an A and a B recommendation. Recommendation A is that subject to the completion of an appropriate legal agreement in respect of the SPA by the 2nd of September. Conditions 1 to 15 set out on pages 1, 2, 3 to 128 of the agenda, and informatives 1 to 8 on pages 1 to 8, 130 of the agenda, that permission be granted. Recommendation B is that in the event that the requirements of recommendation A are not met, permission be refused. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Rachel. Members, it's all yours. councillor Williamson.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I think I have two positive points and two negative points. Going for the positive points first, I was very pleased at the work that the officers had done to improve the design, the detailed design of the building, particularly on the inside, on the quadrangle area. I think that made a massive difference to the design. And the change to the roof structure, that really changes the perspective of the building and I think the officers are to absolutely be complimented on that. The two areas of concern I've got are: one, the Farnham council had originally said that it was a cramped design for the site, and I specifically went to have another look at it over the weekend, and it is, you know, it's not that big a site. And this is absolutely squeezed in, it's shoehorned in. And we were told that there had been a reduction. In fact, I looked at the earlier plans and the reduction is five square metres. It's like a sort of shoe-covered reduction in over 3,000 square metres. So I thought that was really not a particularly good response from the developers. The second point, which is the second negative point, is the transport. There's a clear statement in the reports about the good public transport access, and as all the councillors from Farnham know, the two buses which go along West Street are both in the process of being cancelled by the end of this month. This was, my request was confirmed by Surrey council today to the officers. And yet, the Surrey council person responsible for this still said that he stood by his decision and that there were good transport links, and he quoted some report which said that you could walk the one and a half miles. Now, this is a care home for elderly people, you know, we need to think about these things. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Coburn.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I do actually share some of the concerns of councillor Williamson, but what I really wanted to say was not for the first time, Natural England completely baffled me, and I'm delighted to see you've entered, you know, you're suggesting some legal agreement, to put in a report that looks into the future and comes up with all sorts of possibilities that may or may not happen. I mean, if we made decisions on this basis, we'd get absolutely thumped, wouldn't we? You know, a pet covenant, well, who knows what the guidance, I mean, you know, 20 years down the line, everyone maybe have to have a budgie or a dog or a cat or something, it may become law. You know, the idea that you're never ever going to have a self-contained staff apartment there, well, who knows, you know, I mean, it is just such a strange response from Natural England. I was really quite amazed at it. You know, yes, by all means, get the covenant, but, you know, you can't promise things that you can't deliver, and we don't know in the future what changes are going to come into legislation for care homes and for all sorts of other items related to it. So I think on balance, you know, I can accept this with the changes. I actually don't think it's the best use of the site, but that's just a personal belief. I think, you know, on balance, it probably is acceptable. But I do think that legal agreement is excellent news because certainly, Natural England left me baffled, I don't know about anybody else.
Thank you, councillor Coburn. Members, if that's it, two recommendations I'll move. First, the revised recommendation A is that subject to the completion of an appropriate legal agreement in respect of the SPA by the 2nd of September 2015, conditions 1 to 15, informative 1 to 8 are set out on pages 1, 2, 3 and 130 of the agenda, permission be granted. Can I have those in favour of recommendation A to grant, please show.
Okay, that's 10.
Those against, abstentions? Thank you very much, members, that is agreed, but we move on to the second recommendation. May I have those in favour of recommendation B to refuse if the requirements of recommendation A are not met? Those in favour?
That's unanimous.
Unanimous. Thank you very much, members, agreed. Let's move to item B4, WA2015 1084, change of use and erection of a two-storey extension at 19 Prospect House, Bethel Lane, Farnham, GU90QB. Rachel, would you like to take us through this, please?
Thank you, Chair. This application relates to a site on the south side of Bethel Lane, you'll see it outlined in red on screen. Aerial view, you will see the existing building on site, this is an office building, and an existing parking area. The proposal relates to the conversion of the existing building into residential flats together with an extension. In total, you'd provide a total of nine residential units or flats on site. The proposal includes 10 parking spaces. Here you've got the proposed floor and roof plans for the building, and that accommodates nine flats over two floors, eight of those are one-bedroom units and one two-bed. Proposed elevations for you on screen, that red line indicates the removal of a window, just highlighted there, which I'll come to in the update. Otherwise, you will see that the proposed elevations would alter the existing elevations both on the existing building as well as the extension, and would include timber cladding and render. And that's the existing floor plans on screen. A few site photographs, this is looking at the site frontage, the existing gates and the existing office building. A further view of the existing office building from within the site. To highlight the neighbouring development in relation to this, you'll see number 17 indicated in both photographs. It's got a side window which looks towards the existing car park, and you'll see it runs fairly parallel with the office building. Views of number 21, that's a bungalow, you see the roof wall just here, runs particularly close along that side elevation of the existing office building. And this photo on the bottom left is taken from the external staircase, and you'll see views towards that rear garden. Officers are recommending a condition to impose screening on this staircase to prevent those direct into visibility into that garden. If I can take you now through the determining issues in relation to the application, the matters of principle and technical judgement are: the principle of development, the planning history and differences with the previous proposal, the housing land supply, highway safety and parking, and the effect on the SPA. The matters of judgement are: the impact on visual amenity, the impact on residential amenity, and amenity space. The site is located within a developed area, and the principle of the change of use of the site, of the building, has been established through a previous prior approval decision that gave permission for a conversion of the existing building to seven residential flats. The parking spaces would meet the council's guidelines in full, and the proposal also includes a number of visual improvements to the existing building. Conditions are recommended to avoid overlooking of neighbouring properties over and above the existing situation. If I can now draw members' attention to the update sheet, you'll note the submission of amended plans, and that includes the removal of that first floor side-facing window on eastern elevation, that's the one which would otherwise face number 17. Additional comments have been provided by the agent in respect of the impact on that dwelling. The applicants have completed an appropriate legal agreement now in respect of the SPA. As such, recommendation B on the agenda falls away. An additional representation has been received from number 21, raising a concern with regards to overlooking, and that's resulted in us recommending an additional condition to provide screening to the top of that external staircase to mitigate that impact. The revised recommendation is therefore that subject to conditions 2, 4, 5 and 6 on pages 151 to 153 of the agenda, amended condition 1, and additional condition 7 on the update sheet, and informative 1 to 4 on page 153 of the agenda, that permission be granted. Recommendation B is deleted. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Rachel. Members?
Thank you, Chairman.
That's so hot, I'm big.
It's all right, it's there. As Ward councillor for this area, I have no issue with the change of use whatsoever. I just think adding two additional flats to the site, it's a very condensed site, it seems a bit greedy and unnecessary to me. I've looked closely at the site, and I think the addition of the extension will unnecessarily overshadow number 17, which is to the side, except now that a window's been taken out and it won't be overlooked, but even so, it will overshadow the site quite dramatically, and it's already a very dark area, so it will result in a loss of light for that property. It'll encroach on the car park quite considerably and make turning really quite difficult there. And I've stood there and looked at it, so I know what it's like. Technically, if you look at a map, you can see it seems okay to you, but if you stand there and look at it, the turning circle is very tight, as it is without the extension. So with the extension, it just seems a bit too much for me. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hodge. Councillor Fraser.
I endorse fully what councillor Hodge has said, Mr Chairman, and I would add to that, to the effect that there is no amenity space whatsoever on this site. Even without the extension, the amenity space is zero, it's all car parking. I suppose because they're single-bed flats, the need for the amenity space is less acute. They could all walk half a kilometre to the recreation ground on Apahale Road. Number 21 is very, very close. The building as it stands is right on the boundary. I think there's one toilet and two kitchens which will look out onto a one-metre gap, perhaps a little more than a metre. Does anybody have the figure? It's a brick canyon with three windows looking out onto it. I can't imagine anything more evil. I rest my case.
Thank you, councillor. I think Rachel was just about to come up with a measurement.
Is a metre between those two. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor MacLeod.
Thank you, Chairman. Could I ask a question about councillor Fraser's comments? As I understand it, they've already got permission to build the windows and so on, but they're asking for permission to build a larger building, which may or may not be acceptable, but the three windows will be there whatever happens. And can I just clarify one thing? Is the existing permission on permitted development rather than a planning application? So the planning application is for the extension?
Rachel?
Thank you, Chairman.
Yes, a prior approval application, so that's a sort of new part of the permitted development procedure, is what that was granted under, so that allows the conversion of the existing building. The windows on that building are going to stay as existing. Obviously, they'll be serving residential development as opposed to existing office use, but that aside, they would not be changing. The only change to the windows is obviously on the extension, you'll see highlighted in green. It's because of that extension that they've had to come in and apply for the whole development again, but obviously, they do have a fallback position that if this were to be turned down, they could still implement the conversion of the existing building.
Members, any last questions? Councillor Fraser.
Mr Chairman, it's me again. Can I ask the officers to confirm that the number of car parking spaces with the extension are sufficient? Nine flats, 10 car parking spaces?
Rachel?
Because there is simply no room at all in that area for any overspill cars. Bethel Lane is extremely narrow and there is no on-street parking available.
Thank you for that question. There's a total of 10 spaces on site, so that fully meets our council standards. So what that requires is one space for each of the one-bedroom flats, of which we have eight, and there's a further two spaces which serve the two-bedroom unit, so that meets the standards in full. Thank you.
Councillor Elizabeth first.
Sorry, Chairman, just to add to that, just to remind members, of course, our own guidelines are more onerous than those of the county in these situations, so they're already quite demanding, and they were drawn up and adopted by the council to reflect the high car ownership in the borough, and they have been largely respected by inspectors on appeal. I know we've had one or two decisions recently, of course, a bit of concern, but generally speaking, developers are complying with them, but to suggest that they are ununderprovision would be probably quite challenging because they are already more demanding than most other boroughs are requiring and the county council are requiring. Thank you, Chairman.
Just a thought on car parking. It doesn't really affect this one, but there is new legislation that allows shops to be converted into flats. We have three in my village and a lawyer's building as well that have no car parking whatsoever, and we're on an A-road, you know, so at least we have some parking here that meets our guidelines. It's a whole lot better than Surris and a whole lot better than some of the government legislation. Councillor Potts.
No, as I say, I also know the site, and I think my issue is, yes, this meets the parking guidelines, but it is incredibly tight, and you sort of almost would have to drive in and reverse back up a very narrow passage way to get out because there is no way you can manoeuvre around. I think where it comes back and where, again, we've got to look at this carefully is, they've already got permission for the seven dwellings from the existing office block. already got permission for the seven dwellings from the existing office block for want of a better term. If we turn it down, what is the likelihood of them going straight off to an appeal and us being seen as being unreasonable and everything that comes with that as well? So it's a real, on balance, this one, and I'm not, really not sure which way to go, but I am very uncomfortable about the parking, not because we're not providing the number of spaces, but the fact that that whole area is just so tight to try and do a three-point turn, it's more like a twenty-five point turn.
Karen or Elizabeth, do you want to come, Rachel, sorry. Elizabeth, do you want to come back on that? On the seven-nine? I think you said it all, okay. Members, any last questions then? No, in that case, we'll move to the revised recommendation that subject to conditions two, four, five and six on pages one five one and one to one five three of the agenda, amended condition one and additional condition seven on the update sheet, informatives one to four on pages one five three of the agenda, permission be granted. May I have those in favour of the recommendation grant, please show?
One, two, three, four.
Those against?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
That is lost, therefore can I have a proposer and a seconder and for reversing that decision? Councillor Potts.
Can I suggest a few words?
But can I, you are proposing refusal?
I'm proposing refusal and councillor Hodge will second. And I think it needs to be, we need to talk about the fact that it is very overbearing and I still feel it's overdevelopment of the actual site. And I also would have concerns that, I know councillor Hodge raised earlier when he was speaking about the impact on the amenity of number seventeen, number seventeen, the property. Yep, that one. I think, from my point of view, I think those are the two, the two strongest issues that I would raise.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Hodge? Elizabeth?
Chairman, on that basis, may I suggest two reasons for refusal to put those thoughts together? Firstly, the first one, the proposal by virtue of its form, size and layout would constitute an overdevelopment of the site and result in an unreasonably cramped form of development which would be harmful to the visual amenity of the site and the surrounding area. The proposal would thereby conflict with policies D one and D four of the WAVE Borough Local Plan two thousand and two and paragraph seventeen of the NPPF. And then in relation to neighbouring amenity, the proposal by virtue of its form, size and position, because presumably it's the extension that's the perceived offended...
It's the way this extension works on that very funny corner as you come into the side...
And its juxtaposition with the neighbouring property?
Yes.
Would result in materially, material loss of amenity to the residential occupiers of number seventeen, Bethel Lane, by reason of loss of light and overbearing form? And? Privacy, sorry. Contrary to policies D one and D four of the WAVE Borough Local Plan and paragraph seventeen of the NPPF. Do you want to add anything to that, Rachel? Is that, are members happy with that wording?
I don't think so, given the proper proof back. I don't think so.
Sorry, could you say again, Erica?
Thank you, Chair. The amenity space, that can actually be added as a reason, it's not as significant as the others, but it doesn't harm to put it in.
Thank you. Councillor Potts? Councillor Hodge, are you happy with those words?
Chairman, thank you, I think Mrs Sims and the officers have summed it up extremely well and I would be happy to propose the refusal on those grounds and I would look to councillor Hodge to second my proposal, thank you.
Thank you very much, we have a proposer, a seconder, we have conditions for refusing. Can I have a show of hands, those in agreement with refusal, please?
And that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Those against? Abstentions?
One, two, three, four.
Therefore, permission is refused. Thank you all very much indeed, no need for exclusion of the press and public, so that concludes the meeting, one of the shorter ones, I think, of Weston. Thank you.